Order the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, February the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to give the invocation for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Iredell County.
I have only followed, Lord, we thank you once again for bringing us together here tonight, Lord, safely. We thank you for all the people in this county that we serve, Lord. We thank you for this group of people that come here and work together to make things better for the people of this county. And, Lord, we ask you to give us the knowledge, ability to do the right things. Ask you to take care of everybody tomorrow in this inclement weather that we're going to have, Lord, and be with each and every one of them. And, Lord, ask you to just be with us here tonight, for us in Christ's name and his sake. We do pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Haupt to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask the County Manager, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, sir, Chair, we have no adjustments this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Stroud, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda is approved. Going down our list, we do not have any special presentations or recognitions or awards, and we do not have any appointments before the Board. But tonight, we do have a public hearing in regards to consider proposed amendments to Chapter seven point five and ten point five of the Iredell County Code of Ordinances. And at this moment, I'd like to turn it over to County Manager and the County Attorney.
Thank you. I'm going to let our County Attorney, Ms. Valdez, do the heavy lifting on this, but this is something that we've talked about for a while. We have made various revisions that the Board has requested, the most recent of which was discussed at our retreat, which would be to include obtaining a permit through the Sheriff's Office. And this is regarding solicitation and panhandling in Iredell County. And I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Valdez to talk to you a little bit more in depth about it.
I can discuss it in whatever detail the Commissioners would like. I know that we've talked about this for a couple of meetings. There are two ordinance revisions in front of you. One is to Chapter seven point five, Article four, which is the panhandling ordinance that currently exists and added, or will add, a no soliciting provision to it and sets forth timeframes in which that can and cannot be done, days of the week in which it can and cannot be done. And then also provide some protections as far as if notice is posted on your property or at the quote-unquote premises, which can be at the beginning or the entrance to subdivisions. It closely modeled the Lincoln County ordinance that you all had previously reviewed. It does add, or does have added to it, since the last time we met, the requirement of a permit to go to the Sheriff's Department and obtain a permit prior to any panhandling or solicitation. And it sets forth the requirements for that permit. And there are some additional revisions in what you have for this Chapter seven point five. It was reviewed, it was sent to the Sheriff's Attorney to review, and there are some additional comments. If you'll look at what's the version that you have in front of you, the underlined provisions are what's added, and Section seven point five dash fifty-six under the permit required. That was two requests or two suggestions that were made for paragraph, sub-paragraph C, is that the county may establish alternate permit application locations instead of at other county facilities, at Sheriff's facilities. And then also, in the next sentence, to delete the portion that would require the applicant to have it notarized in the presence of the Sheriff's employee. And so those two changes were requested. And then there was discussion as far as the fee, and the fee that was relayed to me was a suggestion of thirty dollars, and the permit lasts for six months, and then it has to be renewed. The second provision, the second ordinance, is a change to Chapter ten point five, and that was to address some issues that the county has had regarding parking on county property when it either overnight or during normal business hours when it's posted. And those provisions are not currently in the ordinance, which leaves the county a little bit tied when there are vehicles parked where they're not supposed to be and/or overnight, and we have no authority to remove those. And so that was to help address those issues that have happened in the recent past. So before you is the ordinance that would amend both of those provisions of the code as attached. And then I've also included that it's not effective until March first in order to allow the county time to put together the process, the permit application and the process, that people have to go through in order to obtain that permit. I can certainly go through it in any detail, in more detail that you'd like, or if you have questions about those.
You and I had, you and I had talked for, just for the public record, in seven point five dash fifty-two, G, or I'm sorry, H, or H rather, not G. We use the word dusk because it's more consistent with general statutes, instead of putting a specific time, you know, ten a.m. to dusk, because with the time change of the year, it could get dark at five or nine.
Right, and the prior, under the panhandling ordinance, it was dusk to dawn, and there was a request to make it ten a.m. instead of dawn, and then dusk, like you said, the time changes, and that means that the time that it gets dark changes, and so dusk allows a little bit more flexibility.
Right. And then on the seven point five dash fifty-three, E, I had to ask you a question for, from a citizen that wanted to know if the signage going into a residential subdivision was sufficient in not each individual house, and I think that addresses that and says it would be sufficient.
It does. If the no solicitation or no trespassing sign is posted either at the, at the property or at the entrance to the premises, and the premises is defined as the residential subdivision, mobile home park, or other multifamily development, so that you could have it at the entrance and not have to have each property individually post.
And lastly, I just want to thank the citizens for their input. I want to thank you and Darren, the Sheriff, and Adam, his lawyer, and other Commissioners for their input in this, and staff. I think it's important, you know, we're responsive to the citizens that, in some cases, you know, by parties were being harassed in some cases and potentially looking to commit crimes in these neighborhoods, and I think this will address that. And I want to thank, you know, the Chairman working with the Sheriff initially on getting this permitting situation put in, I think that's a great add to it. And the only other thing, does your, does this need to address directly, if all the revenues need to go to the Sheriff's Office that's collected for permitting, or do we need to decide that now? Or does half go to the, the Sheriff said he was okay at fifty percent, I'm okay either way, but I wanted to ask Beth if half of the permitting fee goes to the county to cover things like your cost, and half goes to the Sheriff's Office for administering the permits?
Well, I will, I will rely on County Manager as far as how you need to divvy it up. For the purposes of the ordinance, you don't need to include here where the funds go. And I would suggest that after, after this, for the most part, I am out of it, and it's strictly a Sheriff's Department duty. So I would envision that the fee would go entirely to his line item.
I'm good with that. I think Bert and I talked about that specifically, and I'm okay with that if the Manager thinks that's good, but I just wanted to thank everybody for their input on it. The citizens really appreciate it that I've heard from.
So who puts up these signs?
The subdivision.
The resident, either the resident posts it at their property, or a homeowners association, or the resident posted at the entrance to neighborhoods.
And my, my past thing is somebody has to sign a no trespassing sign to make it legal. So, I mean.
If it's posted, it's posted. It just has to be posted, don't have to sign.
If it's posted, probably has to be signed.
For the purposes of this ordinance, if they have a no trespassing sign up, then, in either no soliciting or no trespassing, then the Sheriff's Deputy can enforce this ordinance.
Right, right.
I'm going to do what we need to do.
I think you're talking about a, there's a different statute.
But I just make sure we're not forgetting something.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Make sure we're not, you know.
So, well, we had a notation in there, talking about county facilities or Sheriff's Office facilities. The problem going specific all Sheriff's Office facilities is because if we have them in another building or something later on down the road, that could be an issue too, correct?
Right.
So the, yes, the reason for the county facilities is that that includes all Sheriff's facilities regardless of the location.
Okay.
And the Sheriff said, and when I talked to Lisa and Adam and Bert, just for the record, the people will have to come in person to get the permit.
And be notarized, is that?
And be, and.
Well, so the second comment that I had was, was to remove it, the document has to be notarized, but not necessarily notarized in the presence of the Sheriff's employee, just so that the Sheriff's employee is not the one who ends up having to notarize it if that's a staffing issue.
Right.
They can mail in their application, or they can drop off their application, but they do have to pick up the permit in person.
Right, in person, right. Thank you for clarification.
And the fee cost, what did everybody think about the fee cost, twenty-five or thirty?
Thirty's fine with me. And because Darren said that that permit's good for six months, I think if that's accurate.
That's how it's written.
So, I mean, you're paying, you're paying thirty bucks for a six-month permit.
Five bucks a month.
So I would ask that, at such time that you're ready to make a motion, I would need clarification as to which of those revisions to accept or not accept, and then I would make it, in addition to adopting the ordinance that you set the fee at the, at the thirty dollars, that you make that part of your motion, because we didn't put the fee itself in here, we just said that the Commissioners.
So whatever fee, and make, and what was the first part?
When you, when you make, if you were so inclined to adopt this, that you make a motion to adopt the ordinance as written or as amended, addressing the two points that I made, and then that setting the fee at the thirty dollars.
So the two points as mentioned by you, and the fee of twenty-five or thirty, whatever the Board's desire is?
Yes, I'll just need direction on if it states.
I'm okay with thirty, if y'all are okay with thirty.
But on the location, we've got to be careful, because if we say Sheriff's Office only locations, if we have it moved years down the road later, something gets moved, we have to amend this ordinance too, correct? So if we leave county facilities, we're covered?
Correct.
Okay. I think we need to leave county facilities, the Sheriff's Office, and other county facilities, as it was originally written. Because if not, if we move something later on down the road, or, you know, you've got Government Center South, or we open up another annex facility somewhere in the county, and the Sheriff's Office is in there, you're going to have to come back and amend, correct?
And that sentence is just related to the, to the application locations, so it's not saying that other departments or anything like that can, can then issue the permits, it's where those applications can be.
Years down the road, you may go to Mooresville, get it, you may go to another place and get it, who knows?
You could go to Central Parking.
That's right.
And get it, I mean, you could go anywhere to get it, so.
On the parking, just curious, especially on the heavier, I'm going to use Pumpkinfest or the bike races on the weekends, do we need to have some type of signage that says this is an okay time to park?
We, we have, for example, at this facility, we have signage that says county parking Monday through Friday, eight to five. So we have that. This provision covers a couple of different, a couple of different issues. For example, if someone goes and parks a vehicle, let's say Government Center South, and leaves it there for days on end, that we have the ability to remove it. Or, for example, there are some, some apartments and things near some of our facilities, and someone may come and park a vehicle in front of, you know, an entrance or something, or where employees, where it's restricted for employees to park, and leaves that for extended days, that's another issue. So.
I think what you would need to do is, is you need to post when they cannot park there, so that then if the vehicle needs to be removed, we can remove it. So if it's that they cannot park from eight to five, or that they cannot park overnight, then that would give you the authority to then.
That leaves Beth discretion to, to post those.
Post it.
Yeah.
Where'd you get one of them, a piece of paper Beth's got on her desk on the windshield?
We do have a piece of paper that we put on the windshields to let them know that, yeah.
Any other questions? Everybody good? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing in regards to consider proposed amendments to Chapter seven point five and ten point five of Iredell County Code of Ordinances. We have two people signed up. The first person is Amanda Sherrill. If you can, just approach the microphone, state your name and your address, please, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Amanda Gooden Sherrill. I live at one fifteen Foxglove Drive, and I greatly appreciate everyone's work with us. We came back in the summer, expressed concern, as we've had repeat, people ringing our doorbells all hours of the day and night, looking in windows. It really made me feel like my home was being cased, because it was the same person day after day, and I know our Sheriff has more things to do than to address solicitors. So I think this is great, if we can educate our community that we should look for a permit, ask for a permit for someone coming to your door. It will definitely deter some of those characters that were showing up at our doors. So greatly appreciate the support from you guys and from our Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person is Chad Gandy. State your name and your address, please, sir.
Chad Gandy, one oh five Stallion Lane, and I came last fall, late last summer, representing the Donnesdale neighborhood. Just want to express my thanks to, to the Board and to the Sheriff's Department for really looking at this and evaluating it. Gets a lot of us peace of mind. Most of us work, you know, during the day, we can carry on our duties. We've got some elderly neighbors that have been taken advantage of on a few occasions, so really want to thank you folks, and just to, you know, I had some discussions with Matt Burleson at the Sheriff's Office, and, and really said, hey, where do we go from here? And the suggestion was just some local legislation. So really, really, really want to thank you folks for, for looking at it and evaluating and looking out for the citizens that have elected you. So again, my gratitude to all of you, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak on this matter? Hearing none and seeing none, I'll close the public comment period and ask if we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this ordinance as amended, the two points that our lawyer mentioned, and the thirty-dollar fee for the permitting.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, say aye.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you wanting to amend it both points? There was different conversation as far as the county facilities and the notarization.
I think it needs to say Sheriff's Office and other county facilities, in case we move something later on down the road, years down the road. That way, we don't have to amend the ordinance, I mean, everybody good with that?
So that would be the three, that would be three points per discussion and the fee, correct?
No, it would just be one, because we're going back to the way it was originally proposed.
Okay, so instead of two points as mentioned, one point as mentioned in the amendment and the thirty-dollar fee. Is that what you needed?
I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance as amended with the points that we've mentioned here, with the Sheriff's Office and county facilities, and the other, and the fee of thirty dollars. Was there another specific one?
Remove the notarization requirement?
No, leave that there.
Saying that it has to be notarized in front of an employee?
No, it can be notarized anywhere if they bring it in, yes.
Right. Thank you.
So just for clarification purposes, it needs to be notarized, but not in front of a Sheriff's employee, and then instead of Sheriff's facilities, it is county facilities, and then a thirty-dollar permit fee.
It would be the Sheriff's Office.
Right, Sheriff's Office.
On Constitution, or other county facilities.
Or other county facilities.
That way, in case something's added years down the road.
And they have to pick up the permit in person.
In person.
Yeah.
Okay.
So amended the motion by Commissioner Haupt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Thank you, everybody, for your work on it. Thank you.
Okay, now it brings us down to our administrative matters that we covered at our four o'clock pre-agenda meeting. We have a long list of them, so I hope you're ready, County Manager.
I'm ready, okay. So the following items, as Chair Conley said, we reviewed our four o'clock, and the Commissioners agreed by consent to place this, place this on the consent agenda. The first item is a request from the Sheriff's Office to approve Budget Amendment Number thirty-two to accept the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program, better known as the JAG Award, to Iredell County Sheriff's Office and the City of Statesville Police Department in the amount of thirty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-three dollars. There is a request from the Health Department for approval to change the existing clinical service fee from a hundred dollars per fifteen minutes to nineteen dollars and three cents per fifteen minutes, and that adjusts it, adjusts it to the allowable rate. A request from IT for a spectrum WAN circuit upgrade from five hundred megabytes to one gig, and that is to increase our speed and lower our cost. It's actually a savings of two hundred dollars a month. This is a three-year contract. A request from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for the North Carolina Amateur Sports, U-Sports Grant Program to purchase U-Sports equipment at Jennings and Stumpy, Stumpy Creek Park, and this is for anything that's dedicated as far as equipment towards U-Sports. A request from Parks and Recreation for approval to apply for the North Carolina Amateur Sports Endowment Fund to fund an amateur sports project at Jennings Park. There was a request from the Library to approve, for approval to apply for the E-Rate discounts. This is a sixty percent reimbursement, and that equates to a savings of seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. A request from the Library to apply for a grant in the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Unity Cemetery Preservation Fund, and this is due, to do cemetery preservation in the Mooresville southern end of our county. There was a request from the Library to apply for a Library Services and Technology Act Easy Grant in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the State Library of North Carolina, and this is to create a story walk at Jennings Park, which is a partnership between our Parks and Rec Department and our library. There is a request from the Library to apply for a Library Services and Technology Act Easy Grant in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars from the State Library of North Carolina, and this is another collaboration with, with Cooperative Extension, and this is to get what's known as a Charlie Cart, which is kind of a mobile kitchen, where our Cooperative Extension Department can work with the library to teach healthy cooking and various classes. Request from the Finance Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number thirty-three to appropriate five hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars of the countywide fire district fund balance to replace the, a totaled fire engine at the South Iredell Volunteer Fire Department. A request from the Finance Department to approve a tower lease agreement for a portion of an area of real property located at one twenty-nine Tower Drive in Mooresville, North Carolina, to Pinnacle Financial Partners. A request from the Finance Department to approve a three-year master service agreement to update the jury software for the courts. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number thirty-one in the amount of one hundred and one thousand dollars, and to award the bid to Ellis Building Company for the Health Department HR Conference Room Bridge Project. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number thirty in the amount of eight thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars to amend the Hall of Justice Space Study CPL contract to include the public defender's offices. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the January two thousand twenty-five releases and refunds. And finally, a request from Administration to approve the minutes from January the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting, and May fourth, fifth, and fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three budget workshops. We did talk about some revisions and corrections, and those will be made, and it was agreed by consent to approve those revisions. All of those items were reviewed at the four o'clock and agreed to place on the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent administrative matters? Motion by Commissioner Brown, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to, for the record, at six o'clock, on our, on our behalf and Beth's behalf, we thanked our staff for the amount of grants that they have pursued and received over the years, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years of saving taxpayer dollars, and I think we just wanted to, again, publicly say thank you to staff and Administration for pursuing those grants. If you don't ask for them, you're not going to get them.
Absolutely, somebody else will get them. Brings us down the list to the announcement of vacancies occurring on Boards and Commissions. I'll turn it back over to the County Manager to go over those.
Absolutely. So these are vacancies, and I'm going to sound like a broken record, because I know I repeat these on a regular basis, but we do have several Boards and Commissions that we are asking for volunteers to volunteer to serve on. We have six appointments available on the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee. We have one appointment on the Iredell County Transportation Advisory Board, six appointments on the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and one appointment on the Troutman Board of Adjustment, and that needs to be an ETJ representative. Information on these boards are available on our website. You can contact Mr. Beth for an application, you can also get that on our website. Any boards that you're interested in serving on, if you'll note that on the form, and we keep those applications for six months.
Our next item brings us to the appointments to Boards and Commissions, and I'll turn it back over again to you, ma'am.
Thank you. So the Board of Equalization and Review, we have five appointments, and all five individuals that are currently serving on that board have volunteered to serve again. So we did not have any other applications for these appointments, so we do have five individuals for reappointment on the Board of Equalization and Review.
Yeah, and you need a motion to approve those, correct, for that appointment?
Yes, please.
I'd be glad to make that motion to reappoint all those who are willing to serve again, and appreciate them willing to give their time.
Absolutely.
All right, got that motion, do we need to go ahead and, all in favor? Yep.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chair Neder, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Going down the list, unfinished business. Anyone have anything unfinished business-wise?
Uh-uh.
This is our second meeting of the month, we have public comment period. I'll take a moment and open up the public comment period. We have no one signed up. I'll ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And now we come down to Commissioner Updates. Jean, you'll start on your side, you got anything?
Just again, thanks to staff and citizens working together for solving issues, and just want to thank all of our emergency services personnel, school's on remote tomorrow, and ask everybody if the weather is bad, and don't get out if you don't have to, because somebody's got to come help you. We appreciate all of our emergency services personnel.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd like to share a few facts from where I've been this past, last been two weeks, of course, from some of the visits. Manager Milton and I visited Brooke Campbell at Statesville High School, teaching as a profession. We go there twice a year, we meet each group of students that are pursuing teaching, quite possibly, however, we share about how the elected side, the staff side, working together, and also I appreciate Manager Milton's expertise, and for those students who are not looking at teaching as a career, share opportunities to the county, a variety of things that we have going on there, so that was a good thing. I also attended the Childcare Crisis Summit, so I'm going to rely on some of the notes that came out of that summit. It was hosted by the Greater Statesville Chamber of Commerce, and there was a variety of professionals, nonprofits, all across the board that attended this. And some of the facts that came out I found interesting, and Lisa Famelo, the Director of the Iredell County Partnership for Young Children, shared that during the last year, last year, just within the past year, five childcare facilities have closed, with a loss of a hundred and twenty childcare spaces. There is another one set to close, and that's going to be another loss of twenty-eight spaces. When I say spaces, that means one child per space for all the, for those facilities. Average annual cost of a licensed childcare in Iredell County is eleven thousand for the one-to-five-year-old, and the infant is thirteen thousand a year. Median wage for early childhood workforce is around the twelve-to- Median wage for early childhood workforce is around the $12 to $14 an hour with a minimal to no benefits. And 53% of those early childcare workforce rely on the government assistant programs because of that pay. And childcare crisis is expected to get worse because there were some stabilization grants that were out there. Those are getting ready to end next month. So oftentimes unless we have little ones at home and rely on childcare situations, there's a waiting list for childcare and it is a challenge of shortage. There is definitely a shortage for places for placement for your children until they hit the school age. So that was brought up. I suspect there's gonna be a follow-up meeting for those who were there and felt that they can help, because it can't be solved by one organization, it can't be solved by one person, the parents can't do it alone, businesses can't do it alone. It really needs to be looked at as a whole. There was a conversation around TriShare and various things, so to be continued on that one. And then last night was the FFA banquet because this is FFA week. Scotty, you know all about Future Farmers of America and Brad, you still live it. We're all familiar with the fantastic, but these numbers, reached out to Nancy Keith at Cooperative Extension and she also shared, to Bill Walker, who's a ag teacher up at North Iroh High School, the numbers are impressive. So we're gonna talk a little bit about numbers from last night. So this is an opportunity for our high school FFAs to come and speak and share where they are going, what they're doing and the exposure to experiences and lifelong lessons. So here's what we've got going on. There are over 2,300 FFA members just in Iroh County alone, six chapters. That's all the high schools and we still have one up at North Iroh Middle School, which is exceptional program. They're really huge here in Iroh County. North Carolina has the third most agriculture teachers behind the state of Texas and California with over 600 teachers in agriculture. That's just in the state of North Carolina alone. North Carolina has 48,241 FFA members in 370 chapters, making North Carolina the fifth largest FFA membership in the nation. National FFA has over 1 million members with 9,235 chapters. Now if you just think about how important that is, that organization is powerful, provides opportunity. Agriculture, very strong. Iroh County number one business. It really speaks volumes though because we talk about the age of a farmer and the opportunity of our youth to learn more about it, the different directions to go with it. FFA plays a critical role in, in our education of our kids. So Future Farmers of America banquet last night. And if you've never attended one, I think one of the things that stands out to me the most is the amount of paragraphs that are memorized by the ones that hold an office. Your daughter, right Scotty? She was.
Vice Chair last year.
Vice Chair.
You pulled last year.
And they stand at their stations and they have their, what they say and what they speak out loud, it's, it's impressive. It really is. It speaks volumes to have that many of our students enrolled in FFA. So huge shout out to, to them. So with that, I'll pass it right back down the line.
Commissioner Brown.
You know, I'd like to thank Commissioner Halp, Commissioner Neder, Commissioner Brown. With five of us representing 200,000 folks, it's tough being everywhere you need to be and sometimes you feel like you don't get everything done. I just want to thank everybody for all the tremendous prayers that's been in, in my family. So have it done a lot as far as any of the extra and I appreciate the times when, when each of us are down, other folks pick it up. And so I'm very thankful for that, but very thankful for the prayers and, and some prayers are being answered.
I'm gonna go back to the FFA thing. I missed the banquet, which I typically like to make all FFA banquets. My daughter was involved big time. She did get to be the number one speaker in Iroh County last year. I don't know where she learned to talk, but, but she's, she's got it. And I told her she needs to be in politics, but, but she's at Mitchell College now, so it's their problem. But I do appreciate the farmers of this community, of what Iroh County offers and what North Carolina offers. But, and, and I do want to tell everybody, you know, we got a couple of firemen out there I see and, you know, it's gonna get bad weather, stay at home. Man, it's, you know, we lost two fire trucks last storm and North Carolina lost, what, we lose 11 in the state? So they're not building fire trucks right this moment. I mean, it takes three years, I think, to get a fire truck. So we, we can't afford this and, and it's, people just go out and.
Just to see what the roads are like.
They are, you know, it's crazy and I'm one of those people, but I do have four-wheel drive. But, but anyway, I just, you know, I hope everybody will be cautious tomorrow, see what happens.
This morning, I went to the civic center and done some opening remarks on behalf of the board, the 9:30 this morning at the civic center and it was in reference to the Drug Alcohol Coalition of Iroh County. And I just made a note here, they covered underage drinking, drug use, harm reduction, overdose, trauma, addiction, substance use awareness. And the amount of people was in that room that have all kinds of organizations that have a true servant's heart. And I would like to remind folks out here that there are people out here that prey on our citizens, that prey on our children to try to get them addicted to things, to try to get them just attached to things and try to take their money and try to take everything. And we have citizens and even kids that are overdosing, dying, killing themselves, everything. And I hope there's a special place in hell for the people who prey on our citizens and things. And at the same time, you know, we've got to be very, enforce our laws. I hope now we're getting serious about the border, keeping fentanyl from coming over. We've got to protect our folks. That's just one thing we have to do. We have to protect. And I think up here, we five do a very good job of making sure that we fund what we can afford and what our people deserve. So I'd like to tell y'all, thank y'all too on that, that note there.
May I ask, can I? There was a student at North Iroh in a bad wreck today. I don't know his condition. Last I heard, it was critical, but I wanted everybody to keep him and his family and first responders in their, in our prayers. I know my heart sank when I heard about it because I've got two kids going north and to North Iroh, but it's a phone call. I don't think any parent, everyone wants to get. So I just wanted to ask everybody to keep them in your prayers.
Any new business from anybody? And comes down now to the county manager's report. County manager.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Report.
Okay. We did have a closed session this afternoon in regards to economic development in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4 and property acquisition in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A5 with no action taken. Brings us down the list. If all hearts are free, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Motion by Commissioner Halp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.
Both look at each other.